And I mean that from like. I like it. I like in part music.
I know, thanks for my whole family.
Feel so special. Yes, I was gonna, I was gonna say this is gonna be my last day. Why? Well, just in case someone gets. What's up, man? Feel like I haven't seen you in a while. Which is a good thing because I'm not just like. Crazy man trying to put on fire. Yeah, no, I agree. Soccer Thursday, state soccer Thursday. Baseball and Medicaid on Friday and Saturday and then state soccer on Sunday. Then pool party and then the soccer pool party Sunday night. We actually have two more state tournaments for baseball. State tournament again this weekend savage. My kids already played. So by the time, by the end of July, he'll be everywhere. We won the state tournament last year. We won our pool this year and we got knocked out. We played two on Friday, we played two games on Saturday. We could've, over three days, we could've won seven games. I mean, it's pretty fun. Maybe there's no way he doesn't tomorrow.
Ah, it'd be great. Oh, definitely keep doing a little bit of that. It'd be great, thank you.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not, it's, it's. I pull up my, I pull up my app from my, the bottom. I don't like changes. That was like a year ago.
No, it's D R. Yes, I know, we're ready for it, but kind of the same. Okay, so we're three. Yes. My brother, my son. My brother.
Yes. I don't think that is called. Right, but they let them. Well, you said, yeah, okay, I totally forgot all that, but that's really good.
We'll just pull that one.
Yes, because you just small time now, it's like.
Okay.
This and there's.
It isn't, it's a moving one, but like, what's the point if you do that initially, is it?
Council, it is six o'clock, we'll call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for July fourteenth. We stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, next item on our agenda is the adoption of our agenda. I will take a motion. So moved. Have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries on to the minutes from the June twenty-third regular council meeting. Take a motion on those.
Make a motion.
Have a motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve the June twenty-third regular city council minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries as well. We have one registered for community comment. I have Kenny from Mr. D's. If you wouldn't mind standing up at the podium. Podium's yours, if you can state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes, sir.
Sure, so my name is Kenny Dumprow. Address, you said? Yeah. Three twenty-one Nineteenth Avenue North. Uh, I'm not gonna take this whole three minutes, it's gonna be brief, but I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Kenny Dumprow. I'm gonna be the owner and operator, Mr. D's, just going into Second Street South over there by West Side Liquor. And you guys are voting on the liquor license today, so I figured I'd come in, show my face, so you can put a name and a, you know, a face to the name and. Yeah, just really excited to open, hopefully, uh, Sartell will, you know, be excited for us too, so just wanna say thank you and appreciate it.
Great, thank you, look forward to it. Council, that's the only one we had registered. Uh, next, we'll do community linkage. We have two public, uh, public hearings tonight, first one is the annexation and rezone preliminary plat for Scout Haven.
Mayor members of the council, in front of you tonight is a, um, annexation, rezone and a preliminary plat for Scout Haven. On the screen in front of you here, the black outlined area is the area we, the parcel we're specifically talking about. Um, I'm gonna go through a couple key points, this is somewhat of a unique process that, um, council's not walked through previously. Normally, by the time it gets to you, it's a final plat, uh, but because this is an annexation that also requires a rezone. Before, uh, spending initial funds in getting this to a final plat, they wanted to assure, uh, that council had a comfort level with the, uh, annexation, rezone and preliminary plat, so there are multiple items that will still need to get worked out between the preliminary plat and final plat, so just keep that in mind and, and some of that'll give you really good opportunity to provide some input. Uh, so what's being proposed here is an eight-phase project for a multifamily. In yellow on the map there, you can see our future land use is guided towards high-density residential, which would be multifamily. The red would be guided towards general business commercial. Uh, presumably, that red area is guided that way accordingly because of the original town square concept that existed several years ago. Um, and we've not updated our future land use since then. Um, but you'll also notice within the preliminary plat being proposed, that a large portion of that red area is being proposed as a dedicated park space within the preliminary plat. Um, it is approximately a fifty-fifty split, it's hard when zoning dissects a parcel like that and there's not a true, uh, parcel line, but it's approximately fifty-fifty of twenty-five acres. Uh, we noted in our, our council memo, some of the demands for this housing, obviously U of M Medical School, uh, coming to the area, Niron Magnetics, overall central Minnesota healthcare hub. We're in the process of completing a Sartell-specific housing study, but we are aware that regionally, there's a one to two percent vacancy rate, well below the five percent benchmark. Um, which indicates that there's high demand, uh, for housing such as this. As I mentioned, future land use is R three with the red area as commercial. We would need to process the annexation first and the annexation is pending that the rezone will take place, so very similar to a property nearby that you saw a couple, oh, it was about a month ago, um, and on that one was the same thing, annexation was pending the rezone. However, with that one, there were not concept plans or preliminary plat that was presented at that time. Um, if the rezone is not approved, the annexation would then be withdrawn. The preliminary plat, normally we see the preliminary plat come in with a final plat, as I mentioned. Final plat will come at a later date, preliminary plat does require a public hearing, final plat does not, so tonight will suffice for the, um, preliminary plat, public hearing, and then a final plat will need to come back. The developer just wanted to ensure that there was, uh, general support before moving forward. There may be some minor changes, especially related to easements, stormwater, um, anything related to the dedicated park property that you'll review tonight. If there are any major changes from the preliminary plat to the, um, final plat, it would require a new preliminary plating process and another public hearing. Specifically, as it relates to the public property being dedicated to ensure transparency and commitment to that public benefit. The final plat is what will trigger any additional engineering and surveying as well as payment of all development fees, so that's why you're seeing this being handled in two separate meetings. Uh, what is proposed on the preliminary plat for the, primarily the yellow area, is an eight-phase, eight lot, um, and then there's the dedicated park property, which is approximately eight point two acres. Proposed as of today, um, again, this is all preliminary plat numbers, is five, five hundred units within those eight different buildings. Um, or nine buildings, eight different lots, and then a central amenity building in the middle. Um, there are permanent easements for what would be a po- a private stormwater pond usage, which would, that, uh, pond is being proposed today in the preliminary plat to exist on that dedicated park property. And then would have a private stormwater usage, um, and, and agreement that maintained the maintenance going forward. There are several comments that still need to be addressed from the preliminary plat to final plat, I won't go through all of them, you have them in your packets, but things like utility easements, um, parking, dedication of right-of-way. We need to, uh, hone in on the park dedication aspect, uh, which we'll talk about tonight. Um, there is a, a requirement that the park space and the park dedication must be completed with the first phase of development, the first of the eight. Um, we have some fire access questions that they just wanna confirm, fire sprinkler, fire hydrants, uh, fire flow tests, and then of course, payment of all fees prior to recording. Regarding the park dedication, this is somewhat unique for council, uh, actually in my tenure here, this is the first time I've had a development where they've actually dedicated park property. Uh, historically, they have, uh, chosen the, uh, fee in lieu process, we offer both in our ordinances and by state statute, you can offer both. Um, so it's the first time this has been used in several years. Uh, a big piece of it is that it's along our Lake Francis and also joins our Sartell Community Center, so the, um, draw of it being an excellent park property location makes a lot of sense. We also heard from some of the property owners at the last hearing that we had for the same general area, that they lack parks in that area, and so it allows us an opportunity to fill that gap. Um, with that, there are two different processes that you can follow, as I mentioned, you can do the fee in lieu or you can do the park dedication. This is somewhat of a combined option. Um, in our ordinances, the residential park dedication, which is would qualify as residential, not commercial, uh, industrial. If you do the park dedication fees, it's nine hundred seventy-eight dollars per unit, um, so you could, you can kinda do the math on that of what that equates out to be. If you do the park dedication by property, it's one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet per unit. Which equates to approximately, if I'm doing my math right, just over thirteen acres, and so those are some of the items that we need to, um, if it's eight point two acres, then the rest will get covered from that dedication fee, if that makes sense, so it's a little bit property dedication and fee dedication, um, to make up, to ensure that we're covering the full balance. Uh, and then of course, determining what will that amenity be, you likely saw in the comments, requiring to connect that amenity to our, our Lake Francis, um, and Community Center Regional Trail there as well.
And if they opt for the more property in lieu of fee, who validates the, or determines the value of the property?
So that is, that's one thing that is not spelled out, um, and that's where I, I think council, if you have some guidance, to me, it would make sense that we would validate, validate that with some sort of an appraisal, um, and/or that it, it is equivalent to whatever that park dedication fee amount is, which is right around five hundred thousand. Um, but we'd be looking for council guidance on that, cause the, it's not clear in our ordinances of how you determine that value. Um, the only way, the only thing that's clear in our ordinances for to determine the value is the, the square foot to get to that acre amount, or the nine seventy-eight per unit on the fee amount. Um, the benefit of a park dedication versus like a park zoning, for example, is that is set by state statute, so once it's put on the plat, and again, having this on the preliminary plat, if that were, were to change, it would require us to come back for a new public hearing. Um, so it's set by, set by state statute, it's strongest possible way to protect public land, it is much stronger than zoning, can't be changed in the future, and if it is changed, it goes back to the developer. Um, and so it's not something where the city can, um, a future council or, you know, city could choose to rezone it and then perhaps develop it or sell it off or something else, this one's landlocked and will have access issues, but um, it acts very similar to a deed on the property, it's into perpetuity, you could presumably, a public could challenge that and could try to take it out, but then it typically goes back to the developer, um, cause they're dedicating it as a part of this plat. The biggest requirement within the state statute around this park dedication property is that it has to be a nexus, and so essentially, we have to be able to show that there is some sort of a gap in our park amenity system and that we're, uh, fulfilling that gap via this park dedication property. Those are items that still need to be determined between preliminary plat and final plat, but it would be really helpful tonight if council could give some guidance on things you might, uh, like to see that we would then bring back to the final plat. As far as financial impact for this, uh, redevelopment opportunity, obviously the eight phases, um, which brings in approximately four point five million in tax base as of today's tax base for comparable buildings, so a total of roughly thirty-six million dollars in tax base. Additionally, uh, deferred assessments, truck fees, permit fees and annual utility fees. It did receive unanimous approval at the planning commission meeting last Monday, July seventh. Um, Carrie Hoganson was able to facilitate that meeting, she is available via phone, uh, if we have any specific questions that I can't answer tonight, uh, so I've got my phone with me and she is watching. And so if there's something that we have a question for her, she will, uh, message me, but otherwise, uh, approved unanimously by them, by them, and if you watch a recording, most of the conversation was around the housing demand and how this will fulfill the high demand we have for housing needs, especially knowing that Niron Magnetics is coming and bringing, uh, almost two hundred employees. Uh, again, next steps would be approve the annexation and rezone, and then after that would be to approve the preliminary plat, but we would also uh, appreciate guidance from council on some of the items that we discussed already, especially related to that park dedication area. With that, uh, would be happy to take any questions before you open the public hearing or allow the public hearing?
Council, do any questions before I open the public hearing?
I, I know it's preliminary and whatever, but in the eight phases, did they, um, establish a scheduled development or at all talk about the staged development of those eight stages?
The timelines related to it? Um, I think I will let them speak to that in the public hearing portion, uh, they are here with us this evening, and so, uh, obviously heard your question and they can speak to that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the annexation, rezone preliminary plat of Scout Haven? Please step to the podium, state your name, address and affiliation, and the floor of viewers.
Uh, my name is Mark Sky, I'm, uh, part owner of Sky Properties, kitty corner to this property here. I have a question, what, uh, do you know where, what the access to this plat is going to be? Um, it looks like it's with already a curb cut on Scout Drive and then on, uh, Dale or is there an access from Dale or?
Yeah, I can field that question, um, correct, there's an, an access that was, um, already constructed off of, um, Scout Drive and then off of Leander, there's an existing driveway entrance. Right, so they're proposing to tie in at that location, we do have some questions, um, with the preliminary plat, with that access that will work out before the final plat.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify?
I'm Riley Kepner, I'm owner representative for unique opportunities in this project here, so if you have any questions, I'm try my best to answer any of them. Is now a good time to?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so obviously, we want to start, um, as soon as we can, but, uh, you know, with the preliminary, the final plating, the whole process of going through this stuff, um, the likelihood of us starting yet this year before winter, um, we're hope, we're kind of optimistic, but, um, soon, you know, if not throughout this winter, maybe trying to get in the first building, um, and going from there, our, our intent is to get one of the first buildings put up, probably the one, um, near the corner of Scout and Leander, and then after that, it would be moving into the amenity center, um, which is that central building on that plat. Um, that building is both amenity center and apartments on each side of that, so we would build one standalone building first, get that one out of the ground to get some housing in there, and then facilitate it with that amenity space thereafter, and then just keep plugging down the road. We wanna try to get all of these completed as quickly as possible.
And council, with the limited audience, uh, probably can open it up for just dialogue if, uh, if there is any questions, we can facilitate that as well.
I guess follow-up on that, uh, how many units in each building do you foresee kind of in that first phase?
Um, I wanna say that, uh, off the top of my head, I think that the first building was an eighty unit, um, so what we're proposing is buildings of all different sizes, um, the soilborne reports came back, and so we're limited to where we can do um, four-story with tuck-under garages, or where we have to do slab-on-grade three stories with, uh, with additional garages, um, you know, outside garages and stuff like that. Our first building is eighty, um, we have a hundred in there, we have everything down to thirty-six units, I believe, a couple of them are thirty-six units. Uh, more towards the west side of the property, um, you can see that those are the smaller buildings down along the south, I think those are forty-eight unit buildings. Um, I believe it was a thirty-six on each side of the amenity center, and then the, um, bigger ones are along the street there.
Okay, I guess my concern is just the mass of the number of units going in to not all be, and I like the answer that you're saying, there's a variety of different buildings, so it's not just one giant block of
Yes, yes. No, we wanna, we wanna offer, um, a lot of diversity within each building and each building, um, you know, they'll resemble each other exterior finishes, but we wanna create some diversity with the finishes on the inside, say one building is finished with white and wood, and the other one is finished with gray tones or something like that. We wanna, we wanna offer everything from studio apartments all the way up to three, four-bedroom, two-bath apartments for smaller families. Um, again, like Anna was saying, um, with the medical field, or with the medical businesses and all these other businesses coming in, um, you know, I have a lot of friends and colleagues that are traveling nurses and it's very difficult for them to find spaces for their three-month gigs that they have, they, you know, they find these thirteen-week traveling nurse gigs and it's hard for them to find places. Um, you know, for people that are in the transition periods of their life, we all know the cost of what it takes to build a house nowadays, and it's not feasible for a lot of people. And so, um, our units will vary from, like I said, small, single, one-bedroom, one-bath studios all the way up to smaller family units to provide that, uh, the options for, for tenants, and, uh, what we really wanna try to do is focus on that amenity center. Um, like I said, that'll probably become, that'll probably come into the second phase, cause we really wanna tune that in and provide the best amenity space in Sartell for apartments, to attract tenants, to retain a great tenant base, and, uh, you know, give them them options. Along with that, having that walking trail, the sidewalks that go around the whole property and then into the park dedication area, giving, um, you know, people areas to walk their pets, all of our buildings will be pet-friendly, um, the amenity space is gonna have a lot of features, outdoor pickleball courts, splash pad, pools, um, you know, golf simulator, things like that for people to, you know, kinda stay within this area.
One follow-up question, Mayor? Um, is there an occupancy level that triggers the next phase that you have, is it eighty percent or do you have a certain occupancy level?
No, no, we don't, um, we are a large developer throughout the state of Minnesota, um, and the way that our company works is we have a property management side of the company and we have a construction side of our company, and our construction side only builds multifamily buildings for our property management company, so our construction company isn't out searching for work, we create our own work. We have a lot of employees that we need to keep employed, so as far as like, uh, certain vacancy rate goes, it's not about that, it's what we can take on, right, we have a lot of projects going on and it's, uh, and so sometimes we'll reach that full capacity where we can only handle so much, our guys can only handle so much, but, um, we're, we're ready to jump into the next one as soon as that other one is near the finish line, and so there should be no holdup with vacancy on that. I, obviously, we'll, you know, keep track of that and see how that is going, but not gonna hold us up from putting up the next one.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions?
So from a park dedication perspective, can, so can you guys, or maybe it's Anna.
So from a park dedication perspective, can, so can you guys, maybe it's Anna to just walk me through a little bit about like, they own the property, the amenities are, who pays for the amenities? Do we know what that amenities might be at this point?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the park dedication will mean the city owns the property and it is in the city's name. And then the amenities on the property, of course, are, are ours as well. Part of what we need to determine yet between now and the final plat process, and we just haven't gotten into these details yet, is what those amenities are. And so if council has some guidance or, or items, Bart has some ideas on, on his end. The only requirement is that it's, it fulfills this nexus requirement, that it's, there's a gap. And then we also are just requiring that it be connected to our, our trail system that's already over there. But otherwise, it's, you know, if there's, there's something specific council would like to see, we definitely are, are open to that.
Is there a timing for us to insert an amenity in there based on the agreement or is that to be negotiated later or?
The only timing requirement is that when they start their first phase, when they record this plat, they have to dedicate the park property to us. And so then, if it is an amenity that they're constructing, let's say it's a trail, it has to meet our standards, has, you know, location, connection, whatever. And that would need to happen with the first phase. But more typical is, especially depending, it depends on the amenity you're asking for. But it's likely something that the city would then do, and we can do that at a, at a later date as funds are allowed. Use some of the funds that they're contributing because of the dedication fee, pair it up with other park funds. You know, I know, I know Bart has preliminary discussed that it'd be really great on this side of Sartell that we could have like a splash pad amenity. And this would allow enough acreage for that. And so maybe it's something like that, but that's going to require time, right? Like that's not going to get built when they do the first phase. The most important thing is that it gets dedicated to us. If there is anything they're constructing, it's up to our standards. And then if there is any fee that needs to be paid, that they do that with the first phase. But our timing after that is flexible.
Just to bolt on to that same concern I had is that it would not be contingent upon them fulfilling a later phase, right? So they wouldn't be able to withhold that amenity until phase eight or something that.
And that's why a lot of times you see the, the public entity handle the amenity piece, because then you get control over when you want to insert that.
May I follow up? On that, then the, the land is being donated, that's a certain amount, and then there's a cash value or, or park dedication fee on top of that. Can that be earmarked for amenities in that park?
Correct, it would, our ordinance no longer. Yeah, it, it, it technically is supposed to go to the park district, thank you, district of that area. And as we, I don't have the park district map, but as we heard from some of the neighbors from the neighboring property that there is, there is a need here for a park, park amenities. And you know, we did talk in our governance committee meeting to of perhaps pursuing a little bit better connection to this particular park dedication area, then go through the community center and that route. But for anybody that lives off in the more residential area, it might make sense for us to, to consider that as well.
Bolted on to that, to the north, you know, when we had the, I'll say the Rowan Barn come in for annexation and rezone. We heard a lot from that neighborhood to the northeast of them, there's no real park there, right? A lot of multifamily facilities, they have their own, but the standalone, single family residents do not. We do have a kiddie playground, I'll call it, at the community center now. But still, that's a jolt, that's a, that's not a, hey, let's walk down to the park situation. So I don't know that we, even with all this, I don't know that we can truly fulfill that obligation unless there was park funds that we then opted to acquire land in those neighbors, neighborhood areas. Might stretch what those funds could do.
Rob, can you jump to the, the one that looks just like this, but on the other side, that you just get an idea of the space? So stormwater ponding there, and you know, how can we kind of incorporate that a little bit? Lake Francis would be on my left, you can see the community center written there.
So is that actually, that's a community center plat though, where the community center is listed, that's actually Lake Francis or pretty close?
Yeah, it's.
Probably right where that C is of.
The community center.
From an engineering perspective, is there a reason why we couldn't tie their stormwater into Lake Francis? Or, you know, expand that versus having multiple little ponds, in my words?
That, that's something that I think could be considered and looked at, and from an engineering perspective, could be done. You would want to work around their private stormwater treatment versus the more regional treatment. But something that could be worked through if need be.
Stormwater is probably one of the bigger items between preliminary and final that we have yet to hone in on, so that's good timing.
Okay. I just see so many of our stormwater ponds that just become cattails and overgrown that if we could funnel it into Lake Francis. Might keep it looking nicer. Council, let's talk about the amenities that we would desire in that area. I know, or Bart, maybe if you had some in mind?
I, so yeah, just kind of quick thoughts were, you know, obviously we need a splash pad in this community. We talked briefly about this in Parks Commission last week. You know, it's kind of similar conversations, is this an underserved part of town? They were all in agreement that it is. We, you know, we're hopefully going to start that park commission or that Parks Comprehensive Study here soon, which is probably going to give us an inventory and talk about areas where we're deficient at and things we need to continually kind of grow. And so, you know, depending on timing, that might kind of be a tool that could be utilized for this. But I mean, ultimately, my experience with these types of projects, when you got kind of a blank slate is, is to get out. This is one of those opportunities where you can really seek community engagement and kind of find out what do people really want throughout some, some concepts, some ideas, and just get that community input versus kind of, you know, taking a very small group of people and making a decision. And like I said, in parks, a lot of these things are already established, so there's not tons of opportunity for that. Where, you know, a situation like this, that's probably the route I would recommend going is, is having that opportunity to seek some community engagement and deciding some of those amenities.
Realizing we're still in a public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to testify before we get deeper into the amenities? Last call, anyone else wanting to testify? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And now we can get deeper into conversation of what our desires might be. So I, okay, maybe kick it off. I, I agree with you that, hey, maybe there's an opportune time coinciding with park inventory and strategy into the future that again, if we get the, we obtain the land, let's not rush to just put something in there for the sake of putting something in there. We can pause and get community input and maybe have more of a strategy as to what goes in there. Is there anything, I guess, outside of that that we would certainly want to see or?
Is it limited though to qualify from a deficiency perspective? Or we actually have to have it narrowed into like, hey, one of these four would qualify, but that's all we can consider close to that or?
I would say the statute language is broad. They refer to it as a nexus and that you have to be able to just prove that, you know, I require me in something of a developer on this park dedication property or, or an excess amenity that you have, you know, that it's a reasonable, it's proportionate to the number of people that are living, that are going to be added onto the demands of the park system. So I think, you know, that's obviously our job as staff to articulate that and measure that and be able to show that. But I would say it's, it's fairly broad. And ultimately, you know, I think you heard from the developer and, and as you can see, it's a, it is a blank slate. And from their perspective, as you heard from their amenity building, they're, they have a desire and it, and it benefits their residents too, that this be a, a draw and an amenity that they can use as well. And so they have a vested interest in, in making sure that it's an appropriate amount of property, you know, visibility to Lake Francis there, access to Lake Francis, the community center and amenity that, that then they would use. And to Mayor Fitzsimmons' point, from a construction timeline for us, the most important thing is getting the property dedicated on the final plat. Working out the, you know, fees and acreage amount and negotiating those factors. But then it, it likely honestly makes the most sense that that amenity that we've placed in that park might match the same time period that they're doing their amenity building. And which it sounds like that'll be, you know, the second phase for them, so we've got a little bit of time.
You know, this likely gets resolved through the plating process and design process. But as I look at just the schematic here, if I'm a general resident coming to the area, I'm, I'm coming to the community center. It feels like this path is really serving the buildings and not the community. And so I would want to make sure, and we can maybe put some language into anything that goes forward tonight, is that we make sure that, you know, the, the amenity is for the broader public and it needs to be felt that way and not that, you know, almost that you feel like you're impeding on the, the building's park versus the city park.
I do know that there's a comment already on the preliminary plat that that trail has to be facilitated in that way and connecting. But also I think that this is purely a schematic, yeah, so don't get hung up on.
Quick sketch of a tree.
So that will absolutely get worked out yet. One thing that we, you know, talked about too, from a staff perspective, is just trying to pay close attention to whatever we do use this for as a park amenity, that it doesn't create a long term maintenance burden for us either that we then can't maintain. And so you've heard that from other park properties in town where a trail like this was put in the middle of the park and then it didn't get maintained. And so that is why actually cities moved away from developers dedicating property and went to the fee and lieu option. Because you get this park and then cities have to maintain it long term. And so trying to be mindful of that too of, we have a beautiful trail around Lake Francis. And so, you know, how much more additional trail amenities do we need? But just ensuring that it connects to that, it feels like it's a part of our park system and not the apartment complex campus area. And then that there's enough trails that connect to whatever amenity we put there, but maybe not developing an extensive trail system, for example.
Just kind of going back a few years when we were starting to, and, and I, correct me if this has changed, but we had dedicated, or we had categorized parks as neighborhood parks and regional parks. Each community that got developed out had a, is it a community park? Is that what we're calling it, neighborhood park? And this would be considered?
Regional.
Regional.
Or Lake Francis is a regional park.
The community center and Lake Francis is a regional park, this would be, you know.
Addition to that one, okay.
That would be our recommendation and intent, given the proximity and access to the wide variety of people. I would recommend it's regional, especially with the community center there.
Has there been conversations with the developer and I was here, but is it relates to have they done this before? How have they evaluated the property from a fee perspective? Do they have a preferred method? Obviously, we could come up with some thoughts there, but just wondering if they have.
Do you want to speak to that or is this your first time doing a dedicated like this?
This is the first time that we've done one of these dedicated, yeah.
Can you shed, shed any light why you're going that route for this one versus?
Well, just like Anna was saying, you know, a lot of these apartments get up, get put up in such small sites that we want to have that green space off to the side just as much as you guys do. You know, instead of having these crammed in cities where our tenants don't have any elbow room. We like to see that green space over there as well. Also, it allows us to get more unit density, is that correct? And on this property by dedicating you that property. And so, yeah, but this is the first time that we've done something like this. And I mean, frankly, we don't need all twenty five acres of this property to, you know, you know, for all of these units. The more that we expand out this, it's more costly on our end. And, and so this is an opportunity to get back to the community, provide a nice green space for our tenants, tie it in with the, you know, location next to the community center. And like you said, you know, have, we're obviously open to all suggestions on this trail system. That was just quickly drawn in there the way it is. I think the understanding is that if we did the stormwater ponds on our, on, even on the dedicated park property, that we would be responsible for the long term maintenance of those stormwater facilities on the, on the property. But it is dedicated to the city still, that is their property. So, yeah, I really like your idea of having that trail system be more linked to the Lake Francis trail system and kind of separated, not, not looking so much like it's dedicated to our complex as it is. Maybe looping through that eight acres with just one or two little, you know, spouts off to the side to connect to our trails. That's the way that answered.
Yeah, thank you. The other thing I think about is, you know, our community center does struggle with significant parking issues. Probably throughout the year now. Is there, I don't have an overview of it, but is there adjacency to that east parking lot or the backside parking lot of the community center?
You, you know, kind of upwards says block one there would be like that fire lane that goes along the backside of the, you know, where they store all the, yeah. So you could presumably try to make some sort of a connection back that way.
So I guess I think about that and just the placement, obviously, of the stormwater ponds. That could, this could create an opportunity for additional parking there, which, you know, again, if we had an amenity here, you necessarily wouldn't want to park out of the front of the community center to access this amenity. So I bring that up, obviously that'll be worked through with staff. But as we think about placing the ponds, before we think about what amenity might be there, that pond might really restrict what amenity we could put there.
Or, or even another connection road. Exiting out of the community center, right now we got the one. If there is a way to come off the parking lot on the back, if it's connecting to Leander, Fiftieth all the way through.
If I'm not mistaken, there is another parcel between this and Scout to the north.
Yeah, there's that goofy like triangle one. But there is like a driveway access out to Scout if we. April, do you just want to kind of take note of that as you guys go through the preliminary and final of both ponding? But then, I mean, obviously Bart and, and getting Carrie involved on the amenity. And then with whatever amenity that is, it will require parking.
Yeah, I think councils provide a great feedback on ideas, whether that's connecting to the Lake Francis with the ponding, the trail system, potential parking. I do think a connection potentially, I think those are all things that we can take back as we're working through this preliminary plat and moving it into final plat on, on kind of what makes sense.
One additional item I wanted to mention that you reminded me of with the stormwater ponding is that, as the developer mentioned, it will be dedicated as public property, but then would require that private easement and maintenance plan. Our ordinance does call out with the park dedication that, you know, stormwater ponding or wetlands or things of that nature would get backed off of the park dedication acreage. So if you require, if our, if it's one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet per unit, approximately, I think was just over thirteen acres. That whole chunk right now is about eight point two, but if the stormwater ponds are for private use, that acreage amount will get backed off of what would qualify unless. Right, for being a contribution to the park dedication unless there was a determination that it was being used for a park amenity. So that needs to be worked out as well.
Yeah, as Anna mentioned, that, that stormwater is one of the questions that definitely needs to be worked out. I would think if, if you're tying it to Lake Francis, that would be more of a park amenity. And then we would work through who actually has the long term maintenance, because I'm not sure that would make sense. So again, just that private versus public on the stormwater treatment and amenity versus private treatment would be something we need to work through yet. And location of it.
Council, any other items, questions?
I have a non-park amenity question.
I have a non-park amenity question. Um at five hundred units, where would this rank as far as apartment projects in Sartell? Is that gonna be our largest or do we have bigger?
I have never been a part of one bigger, Mayor Fitzsim, do you?
Trying to think what uh Grandview One is with their connection. That's still probably only a three fifty.
Yeah, probably.
I was just kidding.
Yeah, you would probably do.
It's gonna be our largest apartment project and there's a question earlier about access and it was mentioned Leander, I mean, we talk a lot about the condition of. Leander, are we comfortable putting this much extra traffic on Leander before we have that fixed?
Um no, we we have in the budget that we will do an overlay, not. Not completely redoing the whole road, um but basically a Band-Aid overlay until we would receive bonding dollars to do a full. Uh reconstruct there with curb and gutter and utilities, uh and that is projected for um twenty twenty-six?
The overlay is twenty twenty-six.
And so that overlay, I think, will suffice us for the phases that they're planning on doing. But I do think um you raise a really great point that will help us from a lobbying perspective and advocating. This is a a massive housing project that is frankly going to be needed for the the healthcare hub area, the medical school. And also at request of NIR and Magnetics, this was a big piece of their um entire recruitment process was understanding. How are we gonna have housing to support their employees? Well, now we're able to provide the housing, but we need the funding from the state to be able to support the infrastructure needs, and so this will be able to point to that, which I think will be. Really advantageous for us, cuz you're right, it has to be redone, this will not. Leander, even with an overlay, long-term, will not handle the traffic that this will demand.
Really good point. Council, any other topics, questions?
Just on the evaluation piece, I mean, do you guys have some thoughts there or have you talked about it, is it a dollar for dollar that we're talking about from whatever evaluation to the fee? Is, you know, what discussions have happened thus far?
Yeah, my thought, um and and we'll take this back from a a development perspective, we talked in leadership meeting of. Correlating it between the two ordinances that we have, which is the nine seventy-eight per unit, if you were to do the fee side. And then um the square footage, you know, knowing we need to basically achieve about thirteen point two acres. Um and then trying to use that fee piece to make sure it's um equivalent, that we're getting. That amount out of both acreage and the fee piece of it, um but if you end up. If we end up needing to determine acreage value. Um I think the appraisal is really the only, probably the only route that would make sense.
So if 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 they were to come in without any uh property dedication, parkland dedication. Uh and only pay the fee, I think you said it was five hundred thousand?
Right, around like four eighty-nine, yeah.
And so if we, if we simply uh put as part of. Our vote tonight or motion tonight of. Equivalent to five hundred thousand with any land requiring a assessment, or excuse me, a uh evaluation appraisal.
Yep, that would help.
I think it helps staff and developer kind of navigate, is it thirteen acres, is it six acres with funds? Is that?
That's kind of where our head was at, was trying to use that as our gauge point, but.
Driven by the city or by the developer?
For the appraisal.
Appraisal perspective.
Um I would think that that would be at the cost of the developer, but. They may already have one, um it's just.
That's why I was asking, if they already have one, then I think we should look at a recertification of that with an external company, just to validate the the.
Yeah, and it's gonna be different now that you, you know, this is landlocked. The valuation of this parcel. As a uh multifamily property versus a park is gonna be different.
Well, but it's, yeah, agreed, it it will decrease its value, right, cuz it's landlocked. And right now, that part of the property is guided for commercial.
Right.
Um. Which I would think would have a higher valuation than uh what's being proposed as R three.
Yeah, that's the hard thing with in appraisals, I'm not sure it's gonna give us. The guidance for. They'll go off of general business.
And I think that's, uh for my charity, I think that's fair, I mean, if I'm a developer and I look at it and say, hey, I wanna spend five hundred thousand or.
Yeah, that's true.
Fees, and now you're gonna put it into a place where that valuation of the property I'm giving you is lower.
Yep, that's true.
If I don't do that, then I get to have the value of the property, right, that that was done in the appraisal, so I I I wouldn't have a problem with that.
That's a good point.
Uh council, first on our docket for this item is a. Um. The annexation with R three zoning designation. Following that, we can get into the preliminary plat where we would put those uh contingencies.
Correct.
So is there a motion? To approve annexation with R three zoning designation?
And make the motion to approve?
So motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion and a second to approve the annexation and rezone for Scout Haven. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That carries. Second item for uh this topic is the approval of preliminary plat with any conditions. I'll make the initial motion, if we need to add on to it, we can certainly amend it. Uh but I'd motion to approve the preliminary plat. With the uh bullet that park dedication. Through a combination of dedication uh of land and fees needs to equal five hundred thousand dollars. And that land would need to come with a certified appraisal. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, what second then?
Second that, is there any uh discussion or amendment to that motion that'd be desired? So what we are, uh what we have motioned and seconded is the approval of the preliminary. And then again, a combination of land and park dedication fees totaling five hundred thousand dollars. With an appraisal to determine value of land.
And just for unclear, the this'll come back later with some of the other bullet points that we're discussing.
Yeah, he will receive a final plat back that would um address. Park related and and this dedicated piece and stormwater and access and some of the items that we just really haven't flushed out yet.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That carries. Onto our next public hearing. We have a unmanned aerial vehicle or a drone, public use. Chief?
Mayor, uh mayor members of the council, uh you have in front of you a public meeting or public commentary, excuse me. Uh for the purchase of a drone for our public safety teams. Uh in the memo, I kind of laid out some of the uses of that drone for us, a lot of that revolves around search and rescue or location of suspects. Uh this is a common uh piece of equipment that is used in public safety and all of our neighboring cities. Currently have and utilize drones as well, uh but I would stand for any questions for you, otherwise, I would just ask the mayor to open up. Uh any public commentary for that, which is a requirement by Minnesota statute before we make the purchase.
Council, uh one thing to add on is there will also be a online uh public comment period, which is uh required by state statute as well. Any questions before we open up the public hearing? Slash comment period? We will open the. Get my legal. We will open a public hearing to satisfy Minnesota statute six two six dot one nine regarding public comment. Period for UAV drone used by local government. Anyone wishing to testify? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council, any other questions? All right, I see no action is needed on that other than opening and closing. Uh moving on to the consent agenda. We have uh. Ten items on the consent agenda, I will pull the gambling permit, item number two. Are there any others that someone might pull? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Um items one. Three through eight and one and two under delegated consent. Is there a second?
I'll say a second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That carries. Uh gambling permits, I posed simply to disqualify myself uh as a firefighter. Um and I believe uh all other firefighters up here are doing the same. Uh so simply to disqualify and it will leave two votes. Uh unanimous, we'll need to approve that. Is there a motion on the gambling permits?
And make a motion to approve? Second.
Thank you, guys, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That carries two zero with three disqualified. Uh council, next is our department reports, city administrator, June twenty-seventh and July second.
Mayor members of the council, happy to answer any questions on either of those.
Any questions for city administrator? Thank you, uh public works engineering.
Yep, mayor member of council, you have a report, um couple things I just want to highlight or touch base on related to the West Side reconstruction project. Um one being an upcoming road closure for Seventh Street North, um which will be starting a week from today. Um that road closure will take place uh three to four weeks to facilitate some utility connections within Seventh Street itself. Um other item of note is um Area C Terry Lane uh construction schedule change. Uh that project now is gonna be split into two phases with the um. Ongoing rain events that we've been having, we've had delays on that project and we wanna make sure that we're not going to start construction on an area that we're not able to finish this year. Um so we'll be splitting that into two phases roughly in half. Uh the first phase will be constructed on the west side of that roadway. Um and that'll be completed yet this year and then phase two, we will start in the spring of twenty-six um and finish that then next year. Happy to answer any questions you have on uh either of those items or the entire report.
Any questions for public works engineering?
Yeah, just quote, you said Seventh Street North, uh where is that gonna be closed between?
Um Seventh Street North from County Road One um to Second Avenue, so um. That northeast corner of the track from there to County Road One is where those utility.
Okay, so I mean, most of the road will be open.
Most of the road will be open, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, uh public safety.
Mayor members of the council, I have my report, if you have any questions, stand for.
Any questions for public safety? Seeing none, thank you, and engagement and experiences?
Mayor members of the council, you have my report in front of you, let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for Nikki? Thank you.
I think Bart, you had one thing to insert.
Mayor and council, uh just wanna reiterate that uh engineering's been doing a good job communicating with residents on the um. Terry Lane phased approach and feedback has been very overwhelming in support of. Going that route uh in order to ensure that the road is going to be complete uh by the end of the construction season. Um the other piece I have is we will be posting a vacancy for the Parks Commission um and receiving applicants for that. And uh would love if uh um as we form a committee to interview those applicants. Um if uh two of you wouldn't mind uh serving on that committee to help us find the new uh Parks Commission member.
Sure. What's timing on that?
Uh hopefully gonna get it posted this week, um and then run it for a couple weeks, um and then uh. Take time to review um the applications, the Parks Commission has a desire to also kind of help with that process. Um so probably look in, um probably about a month out before we really start moving forward with the interview process.
Maybe we can add to the next agenda, um creating a subcommittee for that? If that works for timing?
Yeah, that should work fine, so no problem.
Excellent, uh council announcements.
Uh just one thing, I think uh. With the significant rain events that we've had in the last month, it seems like it's rained every other day and I. I haven't seen a lot of ponding or closure of roads and and that goes with the fire uh callouts as well, I mean. I I'm not sure what the correction was, if it was just that ditch being cleared out, but. Significantly, this intersection here on Pine Cone and Two and a Half. Traditionally floods and holds water and that hasn't happened this year with the significant rain. And then along Grizzly, it seems to be the the road has not had water sitting on it, a little bit here and there, but that's just from disrepair. Um but I I think that ditch project has had a significant impact on some of the flood and water transfer down to the Mississippi, so. Good job.
Uh I have nothing to say.
Nothing tonight?
Only thing I'd add on uh Tim's comments, I I know your crews were out on uh Fourth Ave. Just, you know, close by Middletown Apartments there, it did flood at one point. We had a fire call at the same time. Um so bring that up as we look to put a roundabout there in conjunction with the county is how do we mitigate that section from flooding? Obviously, we're going to have a massive manufacturer go there and that will be their trucking route, and if we have a rain event, I don't wanna be shutting down their production because of it, so. It's a little bit south of that intersection, um. But.
Mayor Fitzsim, the section that isn't reconstructed yet, that's still rural, rural doesn't have curb and gutter, that is also scheduled to be reconstructed. And we are looking at different ways to route drainage and to address drainage and we'll definitely look at that area that currently floods.
Perfect, that is all I have, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.